Negotiation between the municipality and the developer, that would only come into play.
I'm not interested in go, but I don't care about it. That's fine. Just the town and the county. Are you also aware that in going into executive session, that the appellate division in the state of New Jersey, the spirit court, has adjudged that meetings continue over a period of about six months and goes far beyond the COVID meetings record act?
My understanding is of case law in this and both Alma and O'Donnell is that it requires that minutes be taken of all executive session meetings and that upon the conclusion of the negotiation or when you're finished negotiating and it's come to a conclusion or it's no longer going forward, at that point, the records of those executive session must be made public.
I'm aware of that. Now, are you also familiar, though, with the court cases that have said up to six months is too long to keep that out of the public, out of public information, private meetings?
As Georgia stated in the past, I couldn't speak to that without reading the specific case law that case was assigned to. I believe that ongoing litigation or ongoing negotiations, if you were divulged what was being discussed while that was still going on, would be affected or divulged by that.
Okay, effective, however, you've already done that. And I'll tell you why. You had to pass at some point either a salary ordinance and/or some sort of personal ordinance for whoever it was that you were going to hire to undergo these negotiations. Is that correct?
That would be through salary or typically that's done at reorganization each year by accepting the RFP from that person.
Okay, then in some way you, but you need an ordinance to spend money. So in some way, that was associated with ordinance.
That would be through the budget process and with the money's budget.
But it was an ordinance that connected the salary to a hearing, one of the ordinance?
I don't know if that would be an ordinance or that would be by resolution because the, I believe that the ordinance is, is the budget adopted by ordinance?
I think he's referring to a resolution.
Budgets are adopted by resolution.
Hiring.
Okay, then you had to adopt, but in some way, you had to establish that he was going to get paid for whatever his services were.
By resolution.
At that point, that was a public discussion. And according to the law, once there is a public discussion, you cannot go back into executive.
That's much true. That's absolutely true.
Okay, I know it's true, George. I know it's true because I've read the appellate division.
You know, Fred, I don't tell you how to practice.
But I'm not going to go back on what I read.
You stand there and you take these pot shots. That's not, you just make me.
Why don't you know the law? If you know the law, what permits it, you should also know the law which rejects it.
And my statement to that would be just that any of the hiring of any professionals for this borough are done in an open session, a resolution to hire, and there would have been discussion on what their job would be at the time.
Exactly. Thank you. That's exactly my point. You had an open discussion about exactly the thing that you're now using in executive session. That's against the law, George.
It's not what they did. They opened public meeting.
They did?
They adopted a resolution to hire a consultant.
But they had a reason. Don't you do a reason?
That doesn't mean you can't go in a closed session to discuss the contract or the issues in closed session.
You had to discuss the reason, George. You can't just say, "I'm going to spend somebody money because it's nice to do that."
We hired a consultant to advise the governing body with regard to the negotiations on the redevelopment project.
You put it in the open discussion. And that's precisely what the law says. You can't then take it back into executive session.
Fred, you're wrong.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. And I get the law. I'll tell you what. If I bring it the next time, George, will you tell me I'm not allowed to give it to you because you can read it?
I'll read it, Fred. I'm not telling you I won't read it. I'm just saying.
You did it last time, George.
No, I said I wasn't familiar with the case.
And that was a cut off of the discussion. Now, I'm telling you that I can bring it to you to read. If I bring it to you to read, will you then void everything which the law says that has taken place in your private meetings?
No, I'm not saying that. I'll read what you give me and I'll comment on what you make me read.
And then I would like a discussion, please, as to what it is that you're going to do with your inordinate debt. You went from a standard linear curve for 75 years into an exponential curve in your debt. It's unbelievable.
To finish answering former Mayor Bush's question on Phil Rowan and his predecessors were not hired strictly to work on the redevelopment area of the, they were hired to deal with all economic development issues of the borough, including bringing any new business in.
What about Mayor Collinswood? What's he doing for you?
That was hired as an attorney to deal with legal issues regarding, that's, that's.
I respect my point, Mark.
So I just want to make that clear that Phil Rowan's job is to deal with all economic development.
And did you do that with an ordinance?
With the hiring of.
Of the Mayor of Collinswood?
Jim Mailey was hired for a resolution in open public session.
Same thing. So in an open public session, that's precisely my point.
But Fred, under your argument, we hired George at the beginning of each year to represent the borough for legal matters. Does that mean George could no longer sit in any executive sessions without being made public?
That's beside the point. He's calling.
But he's still representing. He is hiring a professional to represent us in any issue.
Agreed, but he's not the person on the discussion. The person on the discussion is the Mayor of Collinswood and the other.
But I hired exactly the same way for the same legal purposes?
Absolutely not. I'll tell you what. I'll be glad to present the court cases to you. That's the way to settle it.
Seeing no other comments. John, we do not have time. I guess it's up to you, man. Come on, John. It's supposed to be 10 minutes, one minute's only.
I can wait again if you want. All about the specials. You go to many different conferences. You free talk to other towns. I would say that a 30 to 40 percent increase in budgets all across, count the most of our towns in this county, in this region, because we're all connected to each other, is pretty much a common thing across the board. Last 10 years, fuel has skyrocketed. Costs have gone up. And you're still paying for the same things in terms of a sewer main, same sewer main that was in the 1990s, but it's only about 10 times the amount of money that it was. That might explain why a lot of towns are facing a lot of debt issues. That's all. I do have one other thing to say. I wasn't going to say it, but you know, I don't care. I really don't care because I used to enjoy coming to these meetings. And now it's, it's.
Well, we enjoy having it.
There, there's no order anymore. There's no order. I respect what the former mayor says, but there's no order.
You do?
When one person has the floor, other people shouldn't talk. Mayor, you see, you understood the financial restraints facing our country. In previous years, as a government official sitting on the Clemson Housing Authority, did you ever question 4% raises for employees?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, maybe we'll go through the council administrator reports, starting today.
Okay, you all got a written copy of minor court. The only thing I need a decision on tonight from the governing body. Last meeting, we discussed the senior transportation, the contract with Scott for the senior transportation services. I get it from all the information that was requested. And if we are going to choose to continue to provide these services to lead the county, we need to approve that contract. If we're going to choose not to, we need to notify them and such so that they can stop the services because at this point, they still aren't providing them. So I just need, I guess, a consensus what the feeling is.
We had a couple of questions about charging the seniors as an extra $2.
I have an issue with that, too. Can we do the contract and make sure that doesn't happen? And I had an issue with that also.
I actually spoke to them and it's not. It's not a required charge. It's a donation.
But do they make that clear enough?
They don't make that clear.
It's on the flyer. I may give out.
I understand that, but I have never heard anyone say.
I prefer that it not even be requested.
It's $2.
Well, it's a county-run thing, so I can't, I don't think that Clemmington itself should change the like request. I could request it. I don't know that they're going to do it. I have no problem requesting it. However, I mean, it's a county-wide, the whole county?
If we are going to do it and that has to be part of it, I would request that we notify all of our seniors that possibly would use it through either a letter or somehow clearly stating to them that it's truly optional, that there's no requirement to do so, and it does not benefit the municipality by paying that and that, that it truly is optional. And that there's no benefit and that service will continue even if they don't pay.
Okay, I just want to note that at the bottom of the flyer does specify that the cost share amount is $2 with no tipping and the driver permitted.
But I think we need to make that very clear to our residents. I think we have that obligation to do that.
Now, who determines that? When the people get on the bus, the driver says, "Two bucks."
I think there's a sign. There's a sign, there's a sign hanging on the bus from what I understand. I've never been on the bus.
And although you're not obligated, you're obligated.
They request it. They request a $2 donation, but it's definitely 100% not mandatory is what I was told by the representative. The director, I know, the director, assistant director, I believe.
Well, we'll tell them to request to take the sign down.
I mean, I can do that, but they don't only provide the services to Clemmington. It's county-wide. So I don't know that mine will request.
And other municipalities may be okay with it. I think if we're stuck having it there, if we can ask them if we can have it not there, but it's got to be part of it. I just think we need to do education to our seniors to make them clearly understand that there's no benefit to paying that money.
All right, we'll just put Clementon Residence, but we'll have to pay you $2 if it's a can.
How about, would it be sufficient to hang signs? I don't even know that we were supposed to say, suggest possibly hanging a sign in Borough Hall and at booster towers where seniors are on their board chairs?
We have a lot of seniors around the town and we have a fair amount of seniors that use it, but we have a, I believe we have a list of seniors that we compiled a year or two ago. We did the senior dance and that compiles a lot of the seniors in town that would use the service. I believe the number that we had was under 200. Why couldn't we just simply put a flyer or a letter to them stating that the buses and the, to all seniors, maybe seniors that don't know it's theirs, so we let them know that it's available, but let them know that there may be $2 that is asked to be contributed, but there is absolutely no benefit to them to do so. The service will continue and the council knows and endorse the donation of the $2.
Well, we can do so. It'll cost money to do the mailing.
Except if not required.
Yeah, maybe we could even put something on Channel 19 or, you know, a newsletter so that get the word out.
We can do that. I mean, it's not going to cost money to do the mailing that you're suggesting. I can put it on Channel 19, like some kind of notice about the services and note on there that it's a donation. We could put it on our website.
I'll tell you what, you write the letter, give me the list of people, I'll hand deliver it to each 200 people in this town. No problem doing that. 200 people knocking on 100 doors, saying, "We need to."
But you have to make it clear, they're asking for a donation, but it's optional, it's not mandatory.
Right. And it says it on the flyers that are sent by the Scott's company.
Bullet board or something. That reaches everybody, the incoming senior set.
Okay, so if we're all in agreement, I'm just going to ask that we add a resolution to authorize the mayor and myself to execute the agreement at hand for their services for 200, so I'm going to get the resolution portion. And the rest I gave you is just for informational purposes. I'm okay.
Actually, I have nothing to report. The environmental, it was meeting March 13th, 2012. They renewed their N Jack membership, which accesses them to include the eligible for grants. They're also getting ready to schedule the cleanups of the adoptive road county program, which is three times a year. That's getting ready. They're getting ready to schedule that. Tom Steiner also asked Janey about, they have their annual photography contest every year. I wanted to know if he could possibly do something on Channel 19 and or sign in center of town. So I told him that we'd contact you and we're ready to do so. The quality of life program, this meeting, Chief Riley talked out about possibly getting the SLAT program to clean out the spillway right there by the Clemson Lake Plaza, the spillway there behind Sopper Bank. So that looks like that might be a possibility coming up with the warm weather because it's a mess. Shady Tree was canceled and the housing authority meeting was the 21st of March. The board was changing their energy provider for lower rates, which is between New Jersey Energy, Hudson Energy, and Direct Energy. They're going with a lady by the name of Sarah Ornell, who just helped set up and finalize the website. They were going over their budget, in which some of the salaries, the budget was tabled for a special meeting. A tenant fell over there and I believe they broke their arm over there at the housing authority. Just so that everybody's aware of that. And there was question about the amendment of possibility of the buywalls for the housing authority to make members of the housing authority. They have two residents in Clemmington, so that is still in talk. And that's all I had.
I have a couple of things I want to talk to you. The reason we were releasing, there was an issue brought up about quads on Signal Hill and its big expansion there. We met the mayor, myself, the mayor, and Tom Weaver met Luchay and the lieutenant of police before the meeting regarding the issue. We came up with a formulation of a plan for it. The plan was put together by the lieutenant and Janey, reviewed again by the people that have the police meeting. And that plan will be submitted to the state. It should be added quickly over us. Most of the work had been done previously by Chief Hunkel in the past, which was putting together the policy and the plan to do it. We probably don't have the manpower to follow through with this. It doesn't allow us to have a plan in place and possibly do it. So we had most of it placed, it just wasn't clearly documented. Also, I currently serve on and have for the past 12 months or so on the county police advisory, which I continue to serve, even if it goes out also, it's requested by the Freeholders to still be on it. We had a meeting this morning where the issue was discussed and working. We should have some decent plans coming out. One, two issues that have served the borough very well. And the first one is decentralizing the transporting prisoners to the central jail in Camden. It becomes a very time-consuming issue for our police officers. And they're looking at creating at least three cell stations throughout the county to bring the prisoners to. And hopefully the prisoners, at that point, if they can turn over the corrections officers there and they be responsible for medical attention for the officers there. Currently, what happens is our officers spend quite a bit of time, let's say, of being anxious, taking the prisoners to the prison in Camden. And if they have a medical issue that a prisoner says for any reason not a medical issue, the prison will refuse them. Police officers then have to return them to a local hospital and stay with them until such time as the release can be, where they no longer have a medical issue. It ties up our officers a lot. So that's something they're looking to agree to have a plan for that very soon, and that will be done. The other issue that was talked about, the beneficial of the county, the prosecutor's office, we've worked with the county and the committee to look at a plan for the prosecutor's office to work with the police department of the county to house evidence for all municipalities of the county, a central evidence depository that municipalities can take any evidence on existing cases through their deposit. They would all be responsible for it until such time as the municipality comes back and claims that we have and had for many years, space issues in our police department regarding housing of evidence. And that would help us out space-wise within our building here and provide more space for our police department. And I hope that, it sounds like there'll be conclusions to both these fairly fast and that plan being in effect and hopefully these things being in place by 2013. On the issue earlier tonight, the police officers that spoke regarding the current budget, I did want to make the governing bodies kind of aware of that. I believe not only the position for the 12 patrol officer was eliminated from the proposed operating budget, but also I believe the overtime budget for the police department is also lowered. The problem we have with that is it could possibly create more overtime charges in the past by not having that position. And it's a strong possibility, I believe, that we could lose one of our current police officers in the next several months. They may be going to another town. And if that does happen, that will even further burden our current overtime budget probably far more than we have budgeted for it. It may be economically advisable to take a look again at that part of the budget to try to fill at least that 12 police officer position so that we do not overburden the budget where it comes to overtime. The problem that we have on that is by law, if that money is not budgeted in place and we overextend that part of the budget, we cannot spend it. We cannot, we have to cease further police operations until November. After November, I don't know if it's first, but the first week of November, we can then transfer money from line item to line item if there is any money left. But if that situation was to happen before that point, we would even have to further curtail our police operations beyond that because that's strictly a line item for salary for police officers. And we would have no other recourse, either of cutting police operations or not paying our police officers. I don't believe they'd work if they weren't getting paid. So I do believe that's something that, and I spoke to Councilman Weaver earlier tonight and asked if there could be discussion through this body before the ordinance is adopted at the next meeting or possibly delaying the adoption of the budget till May if possible, to have further discussion or look at every possible option. The mayor may be totally correct or maybe no other options, but I do believe it's incumbent upon this body to take every action possible or look at every option possible to see if that can be done before this board would consider adopting that budget. And one last thing, for a little bit of history on the department, I believe in the, around 2000, maybe a little after that, and Chief Hunkel, please correct me for a moment as I speak, the department operated, I think, with nine or 10 patrol officers at that point. And under your head of the department, it was possibly as high as 17 to 19 officers?
I reserve any doubt.
I believe it was 17 to 19 officers that we had as little as four or five years ago. And we're far down from that now through attrition. I don't believe we can go any further with attrition and not letting lost officers, but just through attrition and safely protect our residents. The crime numbers have gone up. And the biggest responsibility this board has to the community is to protect it. And that's first and foremost, that this court has an obligation to do.
Thank you, Mark. I think we all agree with that. Any other comments from the council?
Do we have a, can we afford budget meeting?
No, we do not because the budget was already introduced and it's scheduled to be adopted and have come here at the next meeting, April 17th, I believe it is.
I may be incorrect, but when we talk to the CFO, obviously, in a situation where there's no more in the budget, the question a lot of us have, what happens if something happens and there's a possibility of emergency?
You can call for an emergency depending upon what, something happened we're talking about. So if you're, I mean, you can call for a special emergency depending on what money we're looking at. There are transfers at the end of the year or there's additional monies for other settlements left in other lines that can be transferred to cover lines that are deficient.
In order to get a temporary emergency appropriation, what happens if something happens? I'm assuming time is a budget process.
I mean, we don't, we have a budget.
And you can't, I can't go over the asking budget. You can't overexpend what was budgeted in that current year. The issue with that becomes that if it is allowed by the state to happen, and I don't know if that's going to be able to go global finance, but that comes off of your following year's operating budget. So if you overexpend by $100,000 in the current year, that automatically comes off the money that you were allowed to spend in the next fiscal year. So that puts in that people for the following year.
What about the money that we had left over that came in, came back to us from last year?
Money that you, you can't spend that in the next operating year. Money that comes back in from 2011 into the 2012 cannot be spent until the 2000 year operating.
I think you might have been talking about there was additional monies left in the overtime budget. I'm sure that's your.
We had money, when I first got on here, money that was left over from last year. And then you propose to pay this parking lot here and the fire company part of it?
I think you're speaking of the flood that was unused for capital improvements.
Capital improvement funds.
Capital improvement money cannot be spent on operating budget lines.
You can't use that for salaries or any of the operating expenses cannot come out of that.
Can you use it to pay down the debt?
Yes. Well, by canceling it, if it's unspent and it's canceled, typically that money isn't already borrowed. It's accounted for the budget, it's accounted for the line item, it's a ledger, but it's not money that's actually been borrowed that we have in hand. It's debt that we show but never taken any money in for. Once you cancel that debt, it eliminates part of your debt, but it doesn't free up money to spend. If you understand what I mean. It frees up your ledger book, your debt balance, but it doesn't create more operating money.
Okay, but by not paving this parking lot and the fire company parking lot and talking, what was the figure for here? 200,000?
The fire hall?
200, we bonded 200,000 dollars.
It was 200. The actual figure was 180.
183.
184, 182, 183.
Something like.
Somewhere in that ballpark. Very close to that.
And the fire company parking lot is like.
That is the fire.
No, that is the fire company parking lot. There is nothing in place for this at this point. There is nothing in place for this parking lot.
The current fire hall parking lot project, as former Mayor Bush stated, does add to our total debt. The, although not paving it would not help us in fiscal year 2012, what would happen is the current fiscal year, by bonding that this year, that money would be appropriated and borrowed, but instead of a bond, it would be called, was banned, it'd be called banding. And what you do with banding is you take on the debt, you borrow the money to do it, but until you convert that to full bonding, long-term bonding, you're only responsible for paying back the interest portion of that. So we would pay the interest on that for the current fiscal year. And typically, you do not just bond every time. It costs money to bond. You have to, you have to hire attorneys, you have to have everything done together. So typically, you do not bond for everything that you do. You wait till you have a certain amount of banding together. Typically, you look for maybe somewhere between 500 to $1 million worth of debt you have at that point. Then you convert that banding together into permanent debt. And then that permanent debt is paid off typically over the ratio that it's allowed by the type of thing you buy. If it's a, something such as a roadway, a parking lot, typically has a 30-year life expectancy so that debt can be paid off over 30 years. If it's something such as, in the past, we bonded for probably in the last 10 years, approximately seven to eight four-wheel drive police vehicles. They have a life expectancy of only five years, so that money has to pay over a five-year period. So each type of debt you borrow, depending on its life expectancy, requires a certain amount of time to be paid back. But when you borrow within that year, it typically goes into banding. You're only paying the interest. The interest on that money for this year probably would be in the range, I'm guessing, of $4,000 or $5,000 for this current fiscal year for the bonding, banding of that parking lot. And since we probably won't even borrow the money for it and take the money up to the parking lots being paid, which I don't even know when that is, but I would anticipate before June, it would only be six months of that money. That would be banned in fiscal year 2012.
With all that you said, Mark, you're still putting us in debt by paying the parking lot.
And all that, Mayor Bush has, over the last several meetings, brought up several. brought up several pertinent issues that should be addressed and looked at by this body. I did reach out to Todd Saylor, the auditor for Bowman, that audits our books and is responsible for our financial safety, or to give us recommendations.